Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meetings to public session, please? Mr. Mecca, second. Mrs. Luthbarrow, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. I would like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present except Dr. Vannader. I would like to ask, please, Dr. Siery, how would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Klebsi advised that in the case of an emergency, an alarm with sound evacuation will be necessary. You've got doors there, 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 there. Please note all the marked emergency exits. At this time, we request that everyone please turn off their cell phones and other electronic devices, at least put them to silent or vibrate, please. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to add an addendum to the personnel consent agenda? Move the internal auditor report from the finance section to before they approve of the minutes and approve the agenda as amended, please. Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Board recognition, Dr. Marsloff.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Tonight, we are recognizing two Williamsville students who represented the town of Amherst at the state's annual youth leadership forum held in early February. These students are outstanding ambassadors for Williamsville, and we are especially proud of their service to our community. We are very fortunate to have Ms. Kathy Mubarak Miller, social worker and projects coordinator for the town of Amherst Youth Board, here to tell us more about this state leadership event and to introduce our student participants. Kathy?
Thank you, Dr. Marsloff, Board of Education members, Williamsville Central School District staff, and all those that are present today. The annual Youth Leadership Forum is sponsored by the Youth Broids and Youth Burrows of New York State, and we convene every year in Albany. The young people have a chance to go through some workshops, there's a keynote address, and if we're fortunate, we get a chance to meet some of our elected officials, which did happen this year. It is my pleasure to introduce you to two students, who will give you a little bit of report. Veneska Tomer is a senior at Williamsburg South High School, and she is here today with her mom. And Sumitra Pandit is an eighth grader at Casey Middle School, and her mom and dad are here, and her principal, Mr. Dammeyer. Ladies, do you want to come up?
Good evening, board members. So, at the Youth Leadership Forum in Albany, we had the chance to meet State Senator Michael Ranzenhoffer, where we advocated for more funding for youth development programs, such as Youth Bureau's and the Amherst Youth Consortium, by sharing our experiences being a part of these organizations. And we also asked Senator Ranzenhoffer to support raging the age of criminal responsibility from 16 to 18, so that 16- and 17-year-olds are not automatically prosecuted as adults. This Rage the Age legislation was included in the FY 2018 budget for New York State and is currently in effect.
Also, following that, we were able to meet Lieutenant Governor Kathy Hochul, and we listened to a wonderful presentation she gave, and personally, one of my favorite things she said was when she said, "At the end of the day, no matter all the hard work you do, the number in your bank account doesn't matter. What matters is the ultimate image of yourself you leave after you graduate or move on to the next part of your life." And that's one of the key things I remembered of her saying. And also, through the Youth Leadership Forum, I was able to attend a few workshops led by various leaders, but they were all really informational and educational. So, I want to thank you all for having this wonderful event, and Ms. Miller for allowing us to go.
Congratulations. Mrs. Van Seis, please.
Well, I'm happy to see Mr. Dammeyer here, because I would like to start off by acknowledging the Casey Middle School staff with Mr. Harry O'Malley at the forefront once again for their recent video production of Teachers Beat Cancer. Not only do these videos promote positivity and bring a massive smile to our faces, but it's amazing to see how much they generated awareness, as well as many donations that are being brought in for cancer research. So, I would just like to take the opportunity, along with my fellow board members, to extend our sincerest gratitude towards Casey for their time, efforts, and of course, their rock star performances, which are always very, very entertaining, for such a very worthwhile and necessary cause. So, we truly appreciate this. You have made so many incredible videos, and Teachers Beat Cancer is phenomenal, and so we would like to thank you and Casey.
Any other board acknowledgements? Okay. Mrs. Beeger, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Sure. Welcome to all who've come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. However, in order that all of your different issues can be heard this evening, we discourage repetitive statements. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes, so that you can conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with the members of community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. Thank you for your cooperation. And we have no names signed up for public expression at this time. Is there anyone who wanted to speak for public expression? Okay. Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and addendum as presented, please? Mrs. Luthbarrow, thank you, second. Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I would like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district. Excuse me, Teresa Beaton Corrigan from Forest Elementary, a teacher of 24 years of service; Gary Palicio, North High School Principal, for 14 years of service; and Charlene Sardo from South High School, a teacher aide, health aide, for the past 22 years of service. Thank you. Dr. Marsloff, would you like to introduce the internal audit report, please?
Yes, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Maturski, who will introduce our internal auditor to the board. Mr. Maturski?
Thank you, Dr. Marsloff. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Kathy Barrett. She is from the firm Freed-Maxick, and she will be providing the annual summary report to the Board of Education on their internal audits that are given to the district.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to provide you with a brief update on the internal audit services that we provide for the district. The risk assessment has been completed and is in draft format with management to review and approve our findings. Meeting is scheduled with the audit committee to review that report, I think, later this month. In, I'm sorry, May. We identified no significant risks in the evaluation of the risk assessment provided. Management overall has been very proactive in addressing findings that we have come across in our risk assessment process. I give them a lot of credit in the efforts that they do on a regular basis to maintain the strong internal control structure of the district. We have been performing a internal audit of state aid. That is in process. We're working on the last piece with both management and BOSI's to make sure that the state aid information that is provided is accurate and sufficient to support the aid that you receive. A large amount of that is based on attendance information, and that's the last piece that we're working on, making sure that the attendance information that comes from the district rolls up properly into state aid reports. Lastly, we're also doing an internal audit on cybersecurity. That's in the final stages, we're just wrapping up with confirmation of some things, but no critical findings were found in our engagement. Any questions on our process or assess of our engagements?
How do you do a cybersecurity audit?
Oh, we have very smart consultants that do that for us. It involves looking at your systems, how you respond to threats, how your systems have been designed to protect the district, how you respond to phishing schemes by outside entities, and things of that nature.
So, is Freed-Maxick then hiring outside?
No, we do it internally. We have a risk management group as part of our firm that do this on a regular basis for a number of different types of entities, including school districts and local governments.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention. Have a good evening.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting and budget work session held on March 13, 2018, please? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Luthbarrow, thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the board's budget work session and public forum meeting that was held on March 27 of 2008? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you, second. Mrs. Luthbarrow, thank you. Any corrections or additions to these minutes? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Actually, Sean, I abstain.
You abstain? I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand up. So, that would be 7:01. Apologies. Thank you for the correction. The delegate assembly meeting located at the Erie One BOSI's offices in West Seneca will be meeting on April 19, 2018, at 6:30 PM. Dr. McClary, the delegate, and myself, the alternate, will be in attendance. The Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner is at Salvatore's Italian Gardens this year on Thursday, May 17, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Is there anybody here at the board that would like to attend?
I may be able to go. I'm not positive.
Okay.
Double check.
Dr. McClary, okay. Any other? I'll put myself down for that as well. If anybody else would like to go to that, please let the district clerk know as soon as possible, so she can RSVP. Does anyone else have anything else to report under the Erie County Association of School Boards? Under the New York State School Board Association, I don't have anything this month. Does anybody have anything to add there? The Erie One BOSI's annual meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 11, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Erie One BOSI's E1B education campus, located at 355 Harlem Road, West Seneca, New York, 14224. Erie One BOSI's will present its tentative administrative capital and program budgets for the 2018-2019 to its members of the Boards of Education for the 19 component school districts for their review at their annual meeting. There will also be a meet-the-candidate opportunity at that meeting. Would anybody here like to attend and represent the Williamsville School Board at that meeting that night? Nope? The Erie One BOSI's district vote that we conduct will be held on Wednesday, April 17, 2018, at 6:00 PM. That'll be a special board meeting that will be held right here in the Williamsville Central School District offices, right here in this board meeting room. All 19 component school districts are required to vote on the BOSI's budget and board candidates on the third Tuesday in April. Actually, I think the 17th, isn't that a... Yes, that's a Tuesday, not a Wednesday. Mrs. Carey, would you like to give us an update, please, on board candidates?
Yes. Up until this evening, five candidates have provided all qualifying information, and those five candidates are Mr. Sean Lemay, Mr. Eric Bornstein, Mrs. Tony Vasquez, Dr. Robert Campo, and Mr. Mark Mecca. And I did want to add a couple items. The PTSA questionnaire is due on April 16, which is next week, Monday. A couple of those have been turned in, but the rest have not. So, and then, the vote is, so, I'm sorry, candidate night is May 3 for PTSA, and election day is May 15. That's all for now.
Great, thank you. There are four board visits scheduled before our next regular board meeting. They are, starting this Friday, April 13, at Heim Elementary School. That'll be at 7:30 AM. I have down for that Mrs. Beeger, Dr. McClary, and myself scheduled to attend. Anybody else here like to attend this meeting? Mrs. Luthbarrow, okay. Anybody else? Mr. Meyer, okay. Anybody else? Great. Maple East Elementary School will be on Friday, April 20, 2018, at 7:30 AM. Mrs. Beeger, Dr. McClary, Mr. Meyer, and I are scheduled to attend this. Anybody else like to join in on this one? Nope? Okay. Country Parkway Elementary School is on Wednesday, May 9, 2018, at 8:00 AM. Dr. McClary and I are the only two board members scheduled to attend on this one. Anybody else? Yes, Dr. McClary?
I have a change in my calendar, and so I will not be able to do that one.
Great. Mrs. Luthbarrow, thank you. Anybody else, by any chance, able to make the attendance on that morning? That is May 9, Wednesday, May 9, at 8:00 AM.
I think I should be able to make that one.
Mrs. Beeger, perfect, thank you. And the last one is Dodge Elementary School on Friday, May 18, at 7:30 AM. I've got down Mrs. Luthbarrow, Mrs. Beeger, Dr. McClary, and myself. Anybody else able to attend on that one?
You can add me.
Mr. Meyer? Anybody else? Perfect, thank you. The next community forum will be held on Saturday, April 28, 2018, 9:00 AM till noon at South High School. I show Dr. McClary, Dr. Vannader, Mrs. Luthbarrow, Mrs. Beeger, Mrs. Van Seis, Mr. Meyer, and myself, all in attendance. Anybody else able to join us on that final, final community forum? Nope? Okay. I have been serving as the chairman for our community forums this past year, but I'm more than grateful to give it up if anybody else would like to chair this one. If not, I'll continue. Mrs. Luthbarrow, perfect. It's all yours this time. Is there anyone else that attended any events that they would like to report on this month? Mrs. Beeger, please.
Yes, I'd like to report on a conference that I attended in Rochester towards the end of March, and it was actually a state ed conference. It was concerning the New York State Next Generation Learning Standards, which is the state's moving from Common Core standards to the Next Generation Learning Standards. This is something that's quite new, and so this was something actually I attended in my role as educator in a different school district. The information though is quite relevant, and so I wanted to share it with the board and community this evening. The information that they shared about the new standards that will be coming was quite promising. They talked about how, when we look at standards, that that's different from standardization, and that standardization shouldn't kill the hope and love of learning. They really talked about the importance of discovery, and for our younger ones, and play through learning. These new standards that will be coming, the Next Generation Learning Standards, are created by teachers and college professors. Their goal was to create standards that are reading-friendly. They're intended to fix some of the text complexity issues that were problematic with Common Core standards for ELA. And something that's interesting, a little different, is the rollout. It's going to be quite a slow rollout of standards, whereas Common Core was initiated pretty quickly and misinterpreted in many different ways. They talked about how standards are really the goal that we want to achieve. It's not the curriculum, it's not the module, the worksheet. It's where we want our kids to be, what we want them to be able to do, and how districts and teachers choose to get there may vary. It was a nice message, and it was encouraging to learn about the standards and the work that will be done, and they won't be truly rolled out until 2021, is what they shared with us. So, this isn't something that's like new tomorrow. It will be rolled out over time for ELA and for math. That's a little different in other content areas. In the afternoon, after learning about the standards in the morning, we were able to go to different topics, and I attended a workshop about ESSA. That was interesting. They talked about how New York State will be using multiple measures to identify schools, beginning with the 1718 school results. So, it's pretty complicated, and the presentation was actually a little confusing for me and the other participants as well. They talked in particular about measuring academic achievement and how they intend to take state test scores and generate academic achievement measurements. It was, I don't want to use the word disheartening, it was just a little confusing. It didn't seem to make sense. They were trying to get around understanding what's academic achievement versus refusal issue, but I left a little confused from that ESSA, and a little disheartened by the message that I was hearing. Then I went on to a New York State Assessment Workshop, where they talked about the test development, and I was really looking forward to learning more about some of the shifts that the state has been making. We know that there has been an increase in test refusal, in grades 3 through 8 particularly, and so I was hopeful to learn some of the changes. We know, we've heard that this year, the testing period will be a day later, that there's not timed tests as they were in the past. In the workshop, they started to say how the tests were completely written by teachers, but then after asking questions, there were some concerns that came to light. Many of the participants, myself included, were concerned by what we were hearing. The tests are still developed through vendors, not through teachers. The vendors, in this case, Questar, they choose the passages, and then the New York State educators weigh in. What's concerning about this is that, for example, a third-grade test passage can have a reading maturity level anywhere between 3.53 and 6.13. That's sixth, like sixth grade. So, it's concerning for me, because I had just sat through this presentation where we heard with ESSA that academic achievement is being measured and can have implications on our district and all districts across New York State, and yet the metric they're using to measure our students is developmentally inappropriate. It's not necessarily measuring at the grade level, and I asked why this vendor involvement was there, because in the past, New York State teachers directly wrote these tests, and in fact, that's still the case for Regents testing and also for our New York State Science Test. I was given the answer that the 3 through 8 tests are a complicated system, and vendors manage the item bank, but that was a concerning answer for me, too. So, it's not the happiest report. I guess I was frustrated walking out, because I wanted to come back with this great message of some changes that were being made at the state level as far as the content, but I still found the text complexity that they shared to be developmentally inappropriate, and I'm concerned that we're still seeing in these grades 3 through 8 tests that they're just not a good metric to judge grade level proficiency, which is concerning since, you know, you hear so much about this in papers, and it impacts all of our kids' grades 3 through 8. So, that's what I wanted to share with you all concerning what I learned from state ed that day.
Great. Any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Luthbarrow.
I just want to thank you, Mrs. Beeger, for your report. I think it showed the advantage of having educators on the school board, because even though you attended through work, it directly relates to what's happening in our district. Also, I think kudos to our district, because, you know, my children aren't bringing home giant test prep packets, and even the advice from state ed is to not prep for the tests, to just have good teaching practices, and that's what we do here, and that's not always the case. I know that wasn't the case in the district where I work. Students were sent home with lengthy packets over the spring break. So, it's refreshing that that didn't happen here, and that we focus on good teaching. So, thank you.
Dr. Marsloff, would you like to give us your community update, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Lemay. First of all, I want to start off with, several months ago, there were some discussions at the board table about the possibility of having a food table in our cafeteria lines, and I want to say thank you to Mr. Maturski and his team, who have arranged for us to begin a pilot of a food table at three of our schools starting this coming Monday, and based on the results of that, we'll look at the potential for expanding it to all of our schools in the future. So, that is moving forward, and we're excited about what that'll bring for our students. I also want to thank Dr. Siery for arranging for a showing of Screenagers that will be on April 25 at 7:00 PM in the Casey Auditorium. We hope to have a number of folks attend, especially our parents and community members, but if they want to bring along their children, as long as they're middle school age and up, they can attend as well. So, we'll look forward to that. There's a flyer at each board member's spot, as well as we'll be sending that out via WITSMail to all of our parents to make them aware of this opportunity. And then, the last item I want to mention is with our budget. This evening, most likely, we'll be adopting our budget for 2018-19, and I want to thank Mr. Maturski, the leadership team, all of our principals, administrators, and teachers, and staff, and parents, community members, and even students who have had input into the budget and all the hard work that went along with it, and say thank you to the board for their discussion and rational view of what we're trying to do as a school district that allows us to serve the needs of children, but also remain fiscally responsible to our community. So, thank you, everyone, for your work on that.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Yes, Mrs. Luthbarrow.
The question, Dr. Marsloff, with the food table, can you tell us which three schools are being piloted?
It is at Dodge, Forest, and Maple East, I believe it is.
Thank you.
I can almost read lips.
Mr. Mecca?
If we could, once it's operational, if you could snap us a pic and just show us what it looks like, that'd be great.
Dr. McClary?
Again, on the food tables, has information already been sent to parents in these three schools to let them know that it's going to happen?
No, not yet. I wanted to share it with the board first.
Okay, thank you.
I'm beyond ecstatic over this, so, great, great to hear this program rolling out, at least in trial. Thank you. Would someone like to move the first reading of the revised policy, 7313, suspension of students' policy, please? Oh, you know what? I made a mistake here. Hold that thought, I jumped the agenda here, sorry. We have a technology implementation presentation here. Dr. Marsloff, please.
Mr. Lemay, as you skipped over that...
That's my most exciting topic.
That's okay. I know you're a guru of technology, but there are a few people that were jumping up and down, I will say, but we have a pretty extensive presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Valen and Dr. Siery, Mr. Maturski, and Mr. Ferentz to share some information about technology in the Williamsville Central School District. in the Williamsville Central School District.
Thank you, Dr. Marslov. At this meeting, it is our annual presentation of the technology update to the Board of Education and the community. So what we'd like to do is certainly, Dr. Marslov introduced our team here that's presenting, but there also are a couple other people we want to recognize, Ms. Raddis and Mr. Codell, who also work to support technology at the administrative level. So to begin, I'd like to move to the slide that is, actually, to our technology vision. And this, what we just want to do is to review the fact that it's our commitment every day of the year is to encourage and facilitate the use of technology that allows students to learn in a 21st century level. And to do that, we focus on having them learn to gather information, communicate and collaborate effectively with others, and to think critically and problem solve. And we also want to do this in a manner that provides efficiency in the delivery and implementation of all technology. So as we move to the technology goals, our goals will be discussed throughout this presentation. So I'm not going to read them here, but you're going to hear more about them. What I would just like to say is that all of this comes with multiple parties being involved in our process. It includes everyone from teachers, building administrators, librarians, technology integrators, our technology department members, community members, students, PTSA. We involve everyone throughout the year in meetings to gather information and to be able to provide the technology that we hear is required and needed by our students. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farrick.
I have the luxury of the first goal, technology integration. Really, what we do is we focus on empowering students to effectively use the technology. As mentioned before, the next generation learning standards truly articulate the student experiences with regards to digital tools and digital creation. For us, our technology integration goals are really strongly rooted within our instruction and our curriculum. The student expectations focus on creation, not consumption. And then lastly, the guide, the framework that guides us with regards to integration, we utilize a SAMR framework with regards to technology integration in our district. If I look at some frequency or capacity of use at each one of our levels, if we take a look at the elementary, the middle, and the high school levels, just basically a quick overview of just some sample experiences that happen at these levels. When we look at the elementary level, which we're going to focus on, which is K4, we're really looking at student creativity and fluency. It's really their first time introduction to technology. So with regards to that, what we're really looking at is our K2 environment has exposure to iPads in addition to computer labs. So we're looking at digital creation apps and just experiencing with regards to image creation, producing evidence of learning. If we move on to grades two through four, they have exposure to Chromebooks as well as computer labs as well. And really, what we're looking to do there is to enhance that level of that introduction to our Google Suite for Education. We are a G Suite EDU domain, and we utilize those tools and software with regards to our students. As we move into the middle school level, every student has a device. Currently, every student has a Chromebook. So what we're looking to do is to roll in those experiences at grades three, four, those intro level, and we really blossom them into a more strong foundation skills. With kids having a device every day in their hands, it enhances and enriches the curriculum on a daily basis. And it allows those students to build those foundational skills to prepare them for high school. And as we get on to the high school level, really what we look at is there's a really big focus on research-based writing and research-based creation. When I talk about research-based creation, saying it's not copying and pasting, it's about what did you find out? What did you inquire? What did you discover? And then producing something based on that. Typically multimedia-based enhancements that go along with research-based writing. With that, at our high school, they have exposure to computer labs as well and Chromebook cards. Just a quick snapshot, just a couple examples of what's their elementary integration. What you see here, the green screen for video creation. Green screen creation, really this allows us to change the background out on students so they can speak and talk about something that's behind them, or we can also do video behind them as well. It allows a rich experience when it comes to demonstrating understanding about a topic. So picture a frog behind you or something behind you, and you're describing and talking about it, all the way up to full-blown video announcements behind it. And on the other side, you can see a student has the headphones on plugged into the Chromebook, which is not only for listening, but for recording passages, recording speaking, and for listening back and checking for fluency. Just take a quick snapshot at middle school integration. You get to see with every student having a device, no matter where you are within our school grounds with our Wi-Fi access, and then each student having a device. At any point, you have access to content, curriculum, enrichment, at any point for analyzing data, researching that they can have. And then I threw a snapshot in of what they call a hyperdoc, which is really an interactive digital document that guides students through like a personalized learning plan. So you start to get to that personalized level of learning. It's not everyone consuming the same thing. The kids are choosing, documenting evidence of learning, documenting their personalized learning goals as they move through. That's just an example of a reading one. And as we get to the high school level, you can see, starting with that research-based focus, I just took one of students creating a chart on one side with regards to research. And on the other side, it's just a social studies activity where students have to create their own 2002 electoral map. But it's all about creation. Everything is personalized. So what's, everything's unique the kids are creating that's going in. It's not just that template, you know, fill-in-the-blank type of stuff. But that's what the technology allows us to do. It's not only engaging for the students, it allows them to venture down different paths with regards to creation. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Valen, and she's going to move into STEM.
Okay, so in addition to a number of extracurricular opportunities for students, STEM or Science, Engineering, Technology, and Math are STEAM, which also incorporates the arts, is evident at all levels of instruction. At the high school level and middle school levels, Verneer sensors are available in our science classrooms and labs. These sensors plug directly into the Chromebooks through a USB connection, and they allow students to collect, analyze, and interpret real-life scientific data. As we are growing and expanding our offerings with robotics, what we find at our middle school level as well with seventh and eighth graders, the students are using our Lego EV3 robots in their engineering and technology education classes. And this level of experience further continues at the high school with the use of our VEX robotics. At high school, students also have the opportunity to further get some study in the area of programming and coding with an electronics and robotics course in which they're interacting with circuitry and operating electronic equipment from cell phones to robots. Our elementary students, and you can actually see some of the, I'm sorry, the pictures at the bottom, show the use of robots. There are several available, Dash and Dots, for example. We have Legos and We Do Kits and Arduinos, which are actually made available through our teacher center. So we do thank them for that support. Through gifted programming services, we've incorporated robotics opportunities for students. And most recently, our middle school and high school students came together for a tech war on March 27th, where teachers, students, and their families enjoyed many of the student creations produced. As we move forward, the new state and national science standards do give us another opportunity to embed engineering design for students at all levels of instruction. Our science curriculum and our classes will become even more STEM-focused, and our activities and projects will further embed these strategies and skills at every grade level. There's a distinct and obvious carryover when we're talking to about makerspaces. So makerspaces are locations, identified places in our schools, which are actually found in every school across the district, which has one or more of these spaces. In our libraries, as well as many other locations, they're currently used as a place for students to explore and create various digital and non-digital items for a variety of purposes. Students individually and collaboratively do a number of things. They share, they read, they research, they program, they write code, they construct, and they play games. Maker fairs or events have also been held with similar purposes in mind, and a maker mindset case study was offered by our teacher center. Many materials and mediums, such as Legos, robots, kits, various paper products, art supplies, an abundance of things are made available for students. With all of these, our students have engaged, and our staff have engaged, in creative exploratory and interactive experiences within their levels of interest. And this is a collage of many of our happenings around the district with our students actively engaged in all of these wonderful items. We even have one item, and I actually said this would be worthy of seeing in person. One of the items mentioned on the slide is the Makey Makey. If you're not familiar with it, what that is able to do is actually animate an inanimate object to be able to control something else. So a banana can control a computer, for example, or a piece of paper that has a drawing on it can control some kind of game that the students are playing. Well worth seeing. So I will move on to our next slide and pass the mic over to you. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure of speaking briefly about school-community connections. And I have a little bit more of the drier part of our presentation tonight. You'll notice that throughout our presentation. So I had asked Lee, because I thought it might be fun, to have him fly my note pages to me with a drone, but I was voted down by my colleagues. So let me just share with you a little bit in terms of our school-community connections. One of our goals is to increase our WITS parent portal access, our accounts. We actually are pretty high. We are at 96% at the elementary level, 97% at the middle school level, and 95% at the high school level. But we really would like to be at 100% across the board. So we're continuously trying to encourage more and more parents to open a WITS parent account. Some of the other things you're familiar with, so I won't go through them. You're very familiar with our district website. And I'm actually going to talk a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes with regard to WAG 2.0 requirements. We also make ready use of e-alerts, but we use those, we restrict our e-alerts to emergency purposes only, and that's intentional. We want to make sure that when we use WITS, or excuse me, an e-alert, it's for emergencies, to alert our families that there's something that they need to attend to right away. We are to come in the works. We're looking at pre-recorded phone calls to be used again only for emergency purposes. And I have to thank Ms. Raddis and Ms. Wolf for their leadership in this area. They've really taken this on and are moving forward with it. So our timeline for that is hopefully by the summer, we will have all of the infrastructure in place for us to move forward and also have the training underway. In terms of our WITS mail, we've had to consolidate a little bit. What was happening with WITS mail? We were sending out volumes and volumes of messages to families, and they were really slowing the process down. So what we've done is we've developed a schedule for each of our buildings. We release WITS mail communications from our principals on a rotational schedule, basically a weekly schedule. And we've asked our principals in our main offices to be the gatherers of that information so that parents aren't getting the same communication about an event that might be happening from multiple people. So it really has streamlined our communication processes. And then speaking about WAG 2.0, you could actually spend a whole evening presenting on the requirements and these guidelines. They are significant. If you are not familiar with them, I'm just going to give a very, very brief overview. These guidelines require us to make sure that our website and web content is accessible by all individuals. What, excuse me? What that means is that everyone can see it so that it's perceivable. Everyone can operate it so it's operable. Everyone can understand it so it's understandable, and all devices can use it, so it's robust. What does that look like? Well, providing text alternatives for non-text content, providing captions, other alternatives for multimedia, making it easier for users to hear and utilize and see the content, making sure our content is available from keyboard, having enough time to read and use the information. So if you have timed postings, you have to make sure there's enough time for people to access that. Making sure our users can navigate and find content. And you want to maximize your system for not only current but future tools. This is grounded in law, Title II, as well as Section 504. So what does that mean for us? We've been working very diligently with regard to our website. We've worked with, we started with our vendor to make sure that our existing website was consistent with WAG 2.0 guidelines. We then started looking at our content, started looking at content that we may no longer need to have posted there. Some, our old content was not accessible, and we had to make some decisions with that information that needed to continue to be posted. Anything that's posted from this point forward must be accessible. And several members of our district have been trained in creating documents that are accessible once we post them. So we also have a notice of accessibility that we've developed. The board, as you know, has adopted a board policy. We also have identified a contact person for our district should someone have challenges or difficulty accessing content. We also prepared third-party vendor letters. You may ask yourself, what is that? We are also responsible for content that we link to. So if we are using a third-party vendor for some product in our district, even though we don't control their website, we are responsible to make sure it is accessible. So we've had to work and notify our vendors of that requirement. And I think that takes us to professional development.
As reflected in our professional development plan, there are a multitude of professional development opportunities provided. These include our annual catalogs during the school year where numerous classes are offered, ongoing support provided by our technology integrators for schools, teams, and individuals, as well as mobile sessions at each level of instruction. A wonderful professional development opportunity that you'll see reflected on the slide is the Mobile Device Learning Program. This program began last year and now has over 200 participants who have voluntarily committed to being in a partnership with a member of our technology integrator team, a personalized learning plan, and also ongoing professional development. We're extremely proud of all of the work that has been done along these lines. Lee had mentioned earlier the SAMR model. What that is, is a progression of starting with substitution. So you look at your lesson plans, you try to find an opportunity to integrate some technology, and then that continuum just further gets more sophisticated as one becomes more familiar with some of the tools and strategies available. So it's really meeting professionals where they are, looking at their areas of interest. They collaborate with one another, and it's been a very powerful learning experience for all involved.
We're going to share a little bit with you about our board policy, content filtering, code of conduct, and digital citizenship. And I will fly through the first three very quickly because you're very familiar with them already. You know, we have a Board of Education policy, which is our authorized acceptable use policy that requires students and adults using our technology to behave according to certain expectations, rules, and guidelines. We also have in our code of conduct, as you'll note tonight, there is a separate notation with regard to cyber violations, and that has been in our code for a bit of time. And that speaks to inappropriate use of technology. So it could include things like using technology to bully, intimidate, harass, and other. Those are unacceptable. Media downloads that are not authorized, using technology for non-academic purposes. Also, for conduct that occurs perhaps off-campus. If there's a nexus that we can establish between the conduct off-campus and what happens in the school building, we're able to pursue potential consequences for that. And then there's also the Internet content filtering restrictions, and that is in concert with CIPA regulations. That's the Child Internet Protection Act that was adopted in 2000. And there are certain requirements, again, for all school districts to meet with regard to protecting students from accessing inappropriate content. And then digital citizenship. Do you want to start with that?
So students are exposed to both digital literacy and digital citizenship in a number of ways, and the scope of support includes teachers, administrators, and families. The slide that you see before you reflects several different stakeholders who are involved in this effort. And this next slide reflects the multitude of efforts that are present at each level of instruction. A few noteworthy items. All of our elementary students visit the school library as part of their instructional schedule. Our librarians do a tremendous job in fusing a number of items in both literacy and citizenship across the curriculum. These include copyright, citation, and research. And in addition, cyberbullying and digital footprint information is addressed not only by the librarians, but our teachers and techn- by the librarians but our teachers and technology integrators. A great resource that has been used in this area is NetSmarts. At the middle level, Common Sense Media resources are utilized primarily through the Family and Consumer Sciences program. We have a wonderful website that allows us to retrieve many of these resources free of charge. Among the specific topics that are addressed are awareness and responsibility, Internet safety, privacy and security, relationships and communication, digital footprints, and reputation. Students also learn about strategies for guarding against identity theft and scams as they try, as they try to access their private information. Students explore the following question: How can we, as students, interact with each other, the school community, and global community using technology in enriching and responsible ways? With the one-to-one mobile approach, this gets further extended where students are provided with an abundance of information, including orientation on their device as well as our policies and agreements. Students have received this information from the technology integrators, and as well it is reinforced by their teachers during the course of instruction. So during their classes, students continue to learn digital literacy and digital citizenship skills. At high school, our health program incorporates aspects of digital citizenship. Emphasis here is placed further on accountability, portraying a positive image, Internet and social media positives, cautions, and dangers, and potential impact on post-high school employment and opportunities. Screen time, and also refraining from screen time and technology is also addressed. Through our guest lectures, we've had guests such as the FBI who have provided students with further information on aspects of safety as well as digital responsibility. In addition, we'll talk in a few minutes about some of the media presentations that were made. And the last piece I will share with you is that moving forward, what we're looking to do is further extend the additional assured experiences for students in the areas of instruction for both digital literacy and digital citizenship. One example is a possible enhancement of some of the learning experiences, direct contact, direct experiences, interactive and guided learning, K through twelve. We do have some resources that are currently available to us by Common Sense Media that I formerly mentioned, as well as NearPod. And what we're looking to do is also extend additional teacher professional development that will also be offered.
Dr. Valen mentioned some of the other opportunities. As you know, we did offer some information to parents as well. We think they're important partners with us with regard to digital citizenship and cyber safety. So we did offer a parent program for middle school and high school parents, parents of middle school and high school students, as well as a middle school program that we actually pushed out through technology. So this year, we videotaped a presentation and broke that into three segments so that it would be manageable for viewing purposes, and then released that in three segments. This year, the final segment now will allow us to post the entire presentation on the website for anyone who wishes to see it at a subsequent time. In addition to that, just to note the crosswalk, CIPA does require that school districts educate minors about appropriate online behavior, including interacting with other individuals on social networking sites. So we really are trying to be as proactive as we can to educate our students to be safe and appropriate. In addition, one of our other responsibilities that you'll see in terms of our goals, our district goals, is to make sure that technology is accessible and available to all. So we have thank you to the Board of Education, a well-established assistive technology team in the district. We are one of the few districts that has our own assistive technology team. We do conduct assessments. We do trials of different devices. We monitor the implementation. We train our teachers. We train our parents to utilize that device, and most importantly, we train our students. We take feedback from our students. We use the SETE model, so we want to make sure any assistive technology that we recommend is appropriate to the setting, the environment, the expectations, and the needs of the student. If this is grounded in regulation, CSEs must consider, when they're thinking about the needs of the students that come before them, whether or not they require assistive technology tools or services, and if so, it must be reflected on the IEP. We do have, as I mentioned, a multidisciplinary district team. We have two speech-language pathologists on our team, one occupational therapist, one vision itinerant specialist, and then myself and the coordinator of Student Services. We have a toolkit, so we can lend out assistive technology devices ranging from low-tech to high-tech. And then we have a multitude of assistive tools to utilize based on the needs of the student.
Another one of our goals is technology readiness. Really what that does is it focuses on enhancing and expanding students' technology skills when it comes to college and career readiness. One of the key things that we focus on overall are the IST standards, which are the international standards for technology education. Couple of those things I put in here, the global communication, collaboration skills. Our students overall will get an exposure to various levels of software. I listed on there the Microsoft Office Suite, the G Suite EDU suite of skills, the Adobe Suite. Talking about collaboration skills, we utilize WeVideo in our district, which is actually a collaborative video format. So it allows multiple students to work on a video project at once. We're no longer tethered to an actual machine to do that. And with our guidance software, we have Naviance, we have the WITS, which has a resume building option in there. And then lastly, we have the Turn It In feature and GradeCam, which are some software we use at the high school only. Really what that allows us to do, Turn It In, is for, most people will refer to it as plagiarism, you know, but really what it is, it's originality. We use it, we don't use it to truly catch kids. It's really to, the reports are shared with the kids first, so the kids get the originality report back, because there's only so many ways you can say something, and you're going to have to have research-based information, so it's going to come back as matched. So we just teach the kids that when you're citing your work, to utilize that. So the originality reports are really, really extensive for the kids, and it really does help refine their writing process. Next, to address a question, the student mobile device high school transition. So we're looking at transitioning from eighth grade as we enter high school. Naturally, there's already a transition going on regardless if there's a device involved or not, and we have our places, we have our systems in place for that. But just to go over a few things, we do have eighth-grade orientation that we do address the changes that will happen going from eighth grade into your freshman year with regards to a device, because the kids are moving from a one-to-one environment to a non-one-to-one environment. We do have extensive parent communication with them. We even have a transition to high school notice posted on our WITS Parents page for them. Over the last several years, we have offered parent professional development. They're not parent orientation nights. It's more come with your student, come with your son or daughter, and learn what is, we're actually doing. So it's almost like learning side by side. We have to tell the kids to give the device to mom or dad, like get off of it so you can, you know, you let them experience it and see. So we're looking to continue those in the future as well. And then recently this year, we also started the Chromebook Loan Initiative at our high school to kind of close that gap a little bit for students who need access to a device that don't readily have any access to the device at home. Students can sign a Chromebook out from our district libraries. Our librarians at the high school have been gracious enough to work with the process and get them into their system and manage that for us. And then as they transition, there are numerous opportunities at the high school for technology integration from our Chromebook carts that are there to our computer labs that are there. There's a heavy saturation level of technology integration. And not to mention that we do have a board policy that does allow, if the teacher does allow, the students to bring their own device, the students can engage in the content and the lesson based on teacher discretion with their own device if they choose to. And we do have a guest network available for anyone to connect to at any time that is filtered. So with that, I'm going to pass the wand to Mr. Matusky.
And to support all of our technology, we need to constantly be looking at the financial end, and that's how do we support it financially? And we have provided some information here on what the budget is for some of these areas. Software is a little over six hundred thousand, and for hardware, it's almost nine hundred thousand. However, the hardware piece includes a portion of our BOSI's expense that's called an installment purchase agreement. And that basically leverages that amount that you have, which in this case included here is two hundred thousand dollars, over four years. So that represents eight hundred thousand dollars a year in addition to what you're seeing here. So that really helps us support the technology and infrastructure part of our program. And from there, we also have as part of technology, our Smart Schools Project, which you've heard a lot about in the past. I'm not going to go into a lot of the details here because you're well aware of it, but almost three point five million dollars in funding, replacement of switches, wiring, and our certainly, in today's board meeting, you're going to see some infrastructure in wiring for fiber. That's all part of this project. You don't see most of it, but you can see some of the new access points in this room. So that really has provided us the ability to deliver the technology to our students. Moving to the next steps, what we're looking and working on right now is the technology survey. The last one was completed in two thousand sixteen. We need to be looking at this and completing a new one now that will be submitted to the state in October of this year. We will require it to be submitted, or it is required to be submitted to BOSI's by mid-May. So as we move forward with that, we also are working on the District Technology Plan requirements, which is the three-year guiding document that kind of is integrated with the survey. So for this document, we have to have it approved by the board as of July first of this year. There are no changes to the template from the last time, from two thousand sixteen, and we're going to be reviewing the current plan to reflect the current and future needs of the district with our technology committee, and that has already begun. We already had one meeting with them where we've done this, and they have the information, and they're providing feedback. This whole process, again, is similar to at the very beginning when I mentioned we receive feedback from all areas, the PTSA, our principals, our administrators, students. Everyone is involved in providing feedback for this plan. So that is ongoing. And so then the future directions that we're moving forward here in technology will be to continue to assess our instructional and programic needs. That happens really on a daily basis. We will look at device implementation and software. There are many aspects to that, as you are all well aware. But what we will do is we're going to monitor the, that items. We're going to gain more feedback from people, and it has to, of course, go back to the instructional on what is happening in the classroom, what can we do to make that work in a classroom. And then outside of the classroom, what happens if we were to, say, change the one-to-one program right now to not go home? What happens at home? What happens to the homework assignments? That is all information that we'll be gathering and is considered. So we always have to respond to changing needs of the New York State Education Department. And then lastly, going back to that slide I shown, had shown on budget, we have to maintain to be a fiscally responsible program all entailed with technology. So with that, may I open it up for any questions?
Any board members? Mrs. Vancis, please.
First of all, thank you for that very extensive technology update, because I know we shared topics of interest with technology to Dr. Marslov, and I think every single one was touched on, so that was truly impressive. So thank you for your time with that. Two questions, one with STEM. Just wondering if you feel the district is in a good place with having enough resources and materials available as we know that the next-gen learning standards want to incorporate creativity, which is going to be a huge component with the STEM? Do you believe that there's enough resources and materials so that all students throughout the gray levels will be exposed and have this proper setup?
I do think we're in a great place currently moving forward as we delve into the standards further. Part of that process does include looking at resources and materials and really assessing what further needs look like. So presently, I would say we've been very fortunate to get a number of items and resources and materials as part of our current program. But over the next several years, and I go back to what Mrs. Beager said with the science and STEM piece, the state is taking a little bit of a more slow and meaningful approach, I would say. And part of that process will include getting feedback from our teachers and our staff at the building level and our district staff here to assess our needs and then really generate any particulars that we may find that we need at that time.
And then in regards to the technology, the one-to-one at the high school, I personally have no problem with the Chromebooks at middle school. My child has truly learned how to be responsible, which is going to help him as he goes off and is college and career ready. My daughter never had the one-to-one. She's now in high school. She now brings her own device. I know I've heard a couple concerns sometimes for parents. I know they're very leery, but are there enough Chrome carts when a teacher decides that they would like to have Chromebooks available? Do you believe there's enough Chromebook carts available for teachers so that they're not relying on a student's phone?
I think when we look at the resource calendar and we look at the signouts, there are enough carts currently that we're, you know, have a capacity that meets that demand. I can't say that if, say, a mod three at some building, there might be a ton of concurrent users at the same time, want a cart. There could be times where people don't get one. But overall, in general, when you look at a usage over the course of the, over a year, we track that over year over year, and we see how much signouts that we have. There's, we're not reaching complete one hundred percent capacity on every single cart. So at this point, and with our growth that we've had systematically over the last couple of years, we keep moving up how many carts are available, so we're reaching that, we keep building in more capacity. So at this point, we're fine, and I think as we move forward to next year for the growth, we'll be fine as well, based on data.
And just a comment, I, I love the balance that Williamsville offers with the paper pencil, the textbook, and then the technology piece. It's so impressive to see my son, who's in sixth grade, doing noodle tools and using MLA format, all the way up to my daughter, who's a sophomore, that's already doing turnitin.com for English, which is definitely something that you'll utilize in college. So I think it's outstanding. Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, please.
Hi, thank you. First of all, thank you because I did submit quite a list of questions. I do appreciate you addressing pretty much everything that was on my list. Can you tell me what that NetSmarts is that you mentioned? I think was mentioned about digital footprint, using something called NetSmarts?
So NetSmarts is a, is a website that has a collection of resources for usually our younger students for K four to utilize. It takes them through simulations, activities, there's a collection of videos. There's, there's a lot of resources that they can interact with that teaches them the basics of digital literacy, which is usage, and then also the digital citizenship piece that, you know, teaches them proper choice, proper use as they move through. So it is a free website that's available that anyone can use. We also promote that with our parents as well, so it's not just what we use in school. We also encourage our parents to take a look at it as well. It's on our parent page as well for them to access.
It's also prepared or produced by the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children.
I appreciate that. I really like learning new things. Can you also tell me about this survey? Now, it shows that two thousand eighteen submission due May fifteenth, who will be completing that technology survey?
Our district-level administrative team with input from our constituents. So we'll be responding to the survey as a, as a team. So Ms. Raddis, Mr. Ferentz, Mr. Matusky, myself, Dr. Valen, and Mr. Codell.
Okay. All right, thank you. Also, I just want to point out that at the, I believe it was the last community forum, technology was an issue that was brought up, specifically the, you know, the debate about whether to have the one-to-one devices in the middle school versus the high school. I was really happy to find out that there are loners available for the high school students. Do we know estimated, like, what percentage of students have to take advantage of that or numbers of how many get loaned out?
At, at the last report that I have, what, what we have available is she told me on that report about sixty-five percent of the Chromebooks that we have available for loan are signed out on a, on a, on a base, on a daily basis. So what that means is, I can't tell you exactly how many students. I'd have to dive into that, but what it means that at any given date, that sixty-five percent of those loners are going home with a student. It is a two-day max loan period, but if there's one available- It is a two-day max loan period, but if there's one available after those two days, you're allowed to sign it out again, as long as there's not a waiting list. We haven't hit that waiting list yet, so that would probably help you address that question as well. But that's, when I look at the statistics, that's kind of where we're at, and it's a fairly new initiative that we started this year.
Thank you, and I appreciate that any changes obviously wouldn't be made by this coming July for the plan that we're going to be voting on this, at the end of this year, but that due diligence and careful consideration and collaboration is put into any decisions that are made in the future. I am a parent that does believe that it's not necessary, in my view, for them to take home a one-to-one device. Especially after reviewing Screenagers at Amherst Middle School, my eyes were open to a lot more of the dangers of having a device in their hands every day, which was something that was sort of quoted, having a device in their hands every day. I see the benefits. I think we're doing a great job at the district level of teaching our children everything they need to know, but there is a balance. And having children that have gone from middle school to high school, I haven't seen any disruption or any inability of them to be able to complete assignments and carry on with their learning and creation without bringing the device home. So I do think that that's something that I would like us to consider in the future, and especially in that film, Screenagers, there was a portion of it that dealt with research regarding one-to-one devices and their impact on learning. And I don't want to misquote or anything, but it was good, and I hope that consideration is given in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
Go ahead, Ms. Beeger had a question first.
Yeah, you beat me.
I also want to thank you for such a comprehensive presentation. It was excellent, very informative. I had brought up the question of increasing communication, so I appreciate and thank the work of the team and Ms. Raddus and Ms. Wolf on already upgrading our communication, not just through WITS, but also exploring and implementing phone calls for emergency purposes. So thank you for that work. I recall attending a law conference that NISP put on a while ago, and they mentioned the web accessibility guidelines, and this was really helpful for me to see that our district is really on top of that. So thank you for sharing that part, too. My question actually is about what you mentioned as far as the code of conduct, where you said for the cyber violations, one of the components in the code of conduct says that accessing websites for non-academic purposes, which you mentioned. How do we know when students are accessing websites for non-academic purposes, particularly those one-to-one middle school kids that are bringing Chromebooks home at night, and there's not a teacher behind them to monitor? And we would hope that a parent would be behind the monitoring, but in the case that they are not, how does the district monitor that?
Very difficult to do. We do rely on our parents to partner with us when devices are used off-campus. We are looking, however, we've just started exploring some additional tools that we may be able to participate in, purchase, to assist us with further monitoring. So we do currently have one product. It's not at a level that we feel is robust enough. I guess that's probably the best word to use, and so we have just, again, engaged in an exploration. We had three conference calls with three different vendors to look at a more robust product that will help us in those areas as well. So it is a difficult, it's challenging. We do rely on our teachers, on our staff, on sometimes other students, on our parents. We try to partner together, and then we do have a product that gives us some indication when inappropriate sites have been accessed and more. That tool helps us more with concerning sites that might have been accessed, that would require us to really try to respond to the needs of the student, because they're maybe searching on something that would cause us to want to support them in some way.
Excellent. That's great, and I hope that that work continues, looking into those tools, because giving the student that responsibility to have that tool, either home alone or something like that, I'm glad to see that we're thinking about that, and I hope that that work continues. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, so this is somewhat of a loaded question, so I apologize, and I'm sure it varies depending on what device a student uses, what program they're using, what websites they're accessing. But in general, do we know what kind of personal information students are sharing and how their personal information is protected, if at all?
I'll start on that one. What we do is, we do have our filters. We don't collect any personal information. It's, and the way that the Chromebooks are set up, it's, there are not a lot of, like, there's no email system that they would have that would be going externally. So that is, in some ways, a form of protection. I think the software that Dr. Siri just referred to is something that would enhance where we're going with that in the future. It would not necessarily provide information that you could consider being private, that could be someone could break into and gather from external sources, but it would provide us with greater reporting, and it would provide us with the ability to understand if there are issues occurring with particular situations that students are in. So there's a lot of different software packages out there that we have started to look at, as we've just stated, and it's an area that's evolving, and it's some area we're aware of, and we just have to be careful, though, also looking at the legal parameters as we go into there, because that's really a component of this that we need to be aware of.
You know, in addition to that, all traffic that goes through when the kids use their Google ID is packageded, and it's encrypted. So even if you were to get it, you'd have to, we can't, no one can, you know, you have to decrypt it to be able to get it, and like as Mr. Maturski said, we don't really store that much information on the kids anyways. It's a name, it's a first name, and a login, and it's our own private domain as well. So they have limited access on what they can do with that sign-in.
That's also part of the reason why we wanted to make sure we had WITS email accounts as well, so we email within our system.
Great. Yeah, I promise I won't grill you like Zuckerberg got grilled today. That was my only question. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Well, thank you. I have several questions. Probably about half of them were answered here, so I'm going to ask the other half. I want to say thank you, especially kudos to the assistant technology team and tools when you were explaining that about evaluating, training, and educating, and that sort of stuff. That really hits home. Being a technology person in the industry, I got to tell you, new features are always coming out with things, and you want to evaluate them, and you look at them, and you go, oh, that really looks like it's going to hit the, you know, hit the mark here for what we need, but you got to have the time to evaluate it and test it and play with it and actually deploy it to see that it makes sense, and it's great to see that we have a team that does that, so thank you for that. I'm going to jump around here a little bit, but I'll try and keep it somewhat simple. Screen time, you were talking about educating high school students. Any thought process of moving that back into the middle school? Yes?
There is some presently. Again, it's on a continuum. Some of the resources that we're exploring now actually hit some of those things even more so. So the direct instruction, the interactive nature, and some of those guided activities. I mentioned the Netsmart, but the Common Sense Media and NearPod, actually, Common Sense and NearPod have collaborated to produce some training materials. They're actually very well-done, so it actually addresses some of what you're speaking of. So we would actually like to find a way to further extend some of the efforts that we've made, and certainly, it starts early. It starts young. It starts at elementary. It starts even before they come to us, actually. As we know, children have access to devices and digital tools and the like before they even enter school. So I think the earlier that any instruction could begin, the better.
I've heard several times over the last couple of years, and I believe it was a couple community forums ago, we heard about it again, parents talking about agenda planning. And in the elementary school, we use Agenda Mates. In the middle school, we go to a full 100% electronic version. I don't remember the name of the product, but it's kind of an agenda planning that's electronic. And then when we move to the high school, it's kind of left to the kids to decide. I guess the question from parents that I've heard over those years is that transition from middle school to the high school. It seems like it just drops off, and they're not sure what happens, and kids are confused. They don't know which way to go. Some teachers use one way, others use another way. Any comments on that?
At the middle school, they do have the choice. Currently, even my daughter's in eighth grade, and here I stand as a technology integrator, and she uses a paper Agenda Mate. So the kids do have choice. Nothing is forced upon them. The one you're referring to is the one that, one of many that are offered to kids in my homework app is just as an option, offer students to use. Google Keep is another option. Paper is another option. Some of our middle schools do have Agenda Mates for the kids to purchase as well. So there's a variety of choices out there, so I think, I can't tell you that some teachers will choose to do one over the other, and some are digital and some are paper. I think it's, we go more about what the student, what's the best fit for the student, what's going to help them. And ultimately, like I said, my daughter switched to a paper because it was better for her, and then my other daughter was completely 100% digital. So it's what's good for them, and that's kind of the approach we built with.
The Chromebooks going home, Mrs. Beeger asked, and I think you answered most of my question here, but there's, from my understanding, then there's no web filtering currently, so you're looking at some kind of tools for when they take it home, or?
No, all, the Chromebooks, when they go home, are filtered the exact same way they are in the district. So if a site is blocked here, sitting here at school, when they go home, it goes through our, its Lightspeed is the client that we use. So anything that is blocked within the school district, it is blocked when they go home. So there's no, there's no loss of internet filtering or blocking when they leave campus or leave the buildings.
Perfect. That's good to know. I'm glad to hear that.
I don't think we'd sign them home.
Two last questions here for you, and then I'll leave it to you. One was ironically, I'm going to ask you here, and if you don't know the answer, that's completely fine. It was brought up last night. I was at the Forest PTSA meeting, PTA meeting, excuse me, and a parent had asked something about looking up PTA meetings in the district calendar. And my understanding is, you know, when we did the new website, we went to a centralized calendaring system, so when we put it in, it's all through the whole system. The parent showed me, and I later played with it myself, when you go into the calendaring system and look up, and you put the, a tag in for PTSA or PTA, nothing showed up. It went blank. So I flipped over to Heim, Heim, I think it was Heim Middle I might have looked up just as a test, and PTSA council meeting showed up for Heim Middle. When I, I then spent a few minutes, and I literally checked every single box, went one by one, nothing came up, but until I went back to show me all events, and then poof, there was Heim's PTSA meetings, which I believe was tonight, and then another one in a month. So I wasn't sure if it's just a glitch, if it's something still in development, is it...
We'll have to check it. I don't, should be okay.
Again, apologize, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I didn't know the answer to it last night, so. And then my last comment or question for you, so you guys can look into that, was regarding the use of emails and that problem that we've had here. I'm glad to see that we're working on that. Have you put any thought process into possibly looking at developing an app? I mean, we're in the app days, and when we start looking at devices that can do push notifications, I'm getting slightly technical here for a second, but my example would be people will download an app and then set up filters to say, notify me when X, Y, and Z happens. Most commonly, I think it would be the Bills or the Sabres scores getting texted to our phones automatically, right? That's the same concept here, where we could have parents log into the system and literally opt for messages. Notify me when the PTSA has something. Notify me when there's an emergency. Notify me this, and in that way, there's no delay, unlike the email system. Kind of just throwing it out there, not sure if you've put any thought into it. I have no idea what something like that would cost to even develop, so.
We can certainly look into the app piece and find out what might or might be available. One thing I will comment on in regarding the email is, and many of you are most likely aware of this, the emails that we send out are, usually go instantaneously, but they're throttled by the provider that people use. And that has been really the choking point for us recently, because there's just a certain amount that they allow to go out, because otherwise, they would count our emails as spam if they're all going out together in large amounts. So we're aware of that, and we have to protect the district from not allowing us to be considered spam, because then they blackball you, completely blacklist, and at that point, you know, we may not have email available to be sent out. So, but we will look into that. It's possibly a good solution.
Thank you again. Any other questions at all?
Yeah, I have one more question. The biggest complaint I hear from students and parents and teachers and staff and administrators is access to the Wi-Fi system. What are we doing to bring about better access to our Wi-Fi?
I can report on that. We have actually implemented, doubled our gigabytes. We went from one gig to two gigs. We're the first school district in Western New York to do that. So that has allowed us to provide a lot, additional access. We should not have, we do monitor the amount of usage on a daily basis by hour, so we do that. The other piece that will be helpful when we do get to the next points of our new system being implemented is, these access points are at a, of course, a new level, which allows us to have some controls over them. So what that means is, we can see what's instructional-type traffic and what could be personal traffic. And if we come to a point where we're, again, at the ceiling of two gigabytes, we could actually go in and say, this access point's picking up the Apple Watch and all these personal devices that are not related to instruction, because we can tell, and we can say, we only want the Chromebooks in that class to be accessed. So we can stop, cut off the access. That's going to be new. That's all with the new access points. It's all the new software that comes with the process. So again, building all that together is what we're looking at to try and provide this. And the last thing I'll say, Dr. Marslov, is we're not the only school in Western New York facing this. Pretty much every other school is under the same situation, and we are, though, very actively pursuing this, and not just with the double gigabyte entrance, but we're looking into the future to see what else can we do? What's the next step? And it's probably increasing it beyond two gigs.
Thank you all very much for your presentation this evening.
Would someone like to move the first reading of the revised policy 7313, suspension of students' policy, please? Mr. Mecca, is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? Would someone like to move to table the motion for a second reading and adoption at the May 3, 2018 special board meeting? Mrs. Beeger, second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, 700. Dr. Marslov, could you review the code of conduct with us, please?
Sure. In your packets, there is a cover sheet as well as a new draft version of the code of conduct, and please feel free to take a look at it and ask any questions that you might have.
Board members have any questions? Okay, with that, we will now hold a mini-public forum here on the code of conduct. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board about the code of conduct, please, at this time, approach the podium. Sign in, state your name and address, and please introduce yourself. Without seeing anybody rushing the podium, we'll move on. Would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the proposed 2018-2019 budget and property tax report card as presented? Dr. McClary, is there a second? Mrs. Van Sis, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Meyer, I don't believe I saw your vote. Approve? Okay, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the property tax settlements as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you very much, a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, discussion, please? Yes, Mr. Meyer?
Does anyone know what kind of property this is?
I did Google some of these here. If you give me a minute here, I can pull them up. I think a lot of these were apartment buildings.
Can we clarify which one you were asking about? Because I think there are three or four.
Landing Creek. 3,905 to 3,325.
Let's see here. Which one was that one? Yeah, I don't, yep, I see it. I don't have a note on that one. Mr. Maturski, any idea?
Condominium complex.
I thought so. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the Erie One Boses installment purchase agreement as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. You have any liaison conference reports, please pass them to Mrs. Carey. Does anyone need coverage for any upcoming meetings? Looking good. Are there any legislative matters that anyone wants to discuss? Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the textbook, America Through the Lens by National Geographic, to be used by students in the Williamsville Central School District as presented? And I know this textbook has been making the rounds here. I don't know if you guys have seen it down there yet, but we'll pass it down for you. I need somebody though, to make a motion, please. Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow? Is there any discussion on the book? Pause for a moment. Would you guys like to look at the book before you vote? You're okay? Okay. So all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marchlove, could you give us the budget presentation, please?
I would just like to thank the Board of Education for adopting the budget, but I did want to share some information about it. Those things happen from time to time. But certainly, tonight caps off several month process of looking at our budget being based on continuous improvement in our school district, asking three essential questions of what are we doing? Why are we doing it? And how can we do it better in every realm that we have in our school district to provide better for students? So what does the budget accomplish? It maintains our level of academic and extracurricular programming as a tax increase below the state imposed cap, provides additional academic intervention supports for students, supports increased professional development, and adds an instructional coach, and also strengthens administrative support at our elementary and high schools. And it also, as you'll see later, enhances school safety and security efforts. So the board has seen this before. These are the program continuation items, including increases to employee salaries, policy services, social security, health insurance, exceptional education, and student transportation. In addition, we looked at a number of program support considerations and due to the constraints of the budget, we were able to consider these items for adding, which is an instructional coach, academic intervention services, implementing changes to enhance the administrative makeup at the elementary and high school levels, and to increase professional development district-wide. This led to a budget that required just over a million and a half dollars in savings, leading to a preliminary budget of $190,482,210. And this was based on our initial state aid estimate, the tax levy increase, and the sales tax increase, which provided us that revenue budget as well. So what's happened since our last meeting, when we had our budget workshop, we received a little bit of additional state aid where we saw some categories increase and others decrease, but it is a net effect of $333,479 of additional aid from New York State to our school district. So recommended efforts is to complete a security audit. We are in conversations with Amherst Police Department. We have a meeting later this month to establish the audit with them. But in addition, the leadership team believes it makes sense to consider a security audit by an outside professional organization to take a look at our school district's security and safety procedures. It also funds a K-12 behavioral specialist and a 1.0 FTE. What kind of individual is this? This could be a teacher on special assignment. It could be a counselor. Could be a school psychologist. It could be a social worker. It could even be an administrator. The point is they have to have a very specific skill set to be able to assist our teachers, our students, and our parents with certain challenges that are going on with student behavior across the district. And then the remainder of the state aid increase would be used for various physical security upgrades when it comes to things like some of our exterior doors, some of our windows that we need to take a closer look at, and those sorts of items that we intend to initiate as part of this recommended budget. So our expense budget changes slightly during, due to the enhanced school safety efforts and becomes $190,815,689. And that's based on the additional state aid. So the expense budget balances with the revenue budget. We're not using any additional reserves or anything like that to fund any of the expenses. So our proposed budget is $190,815,689. It's a 2.51% budget-to-budget increase. The estimated tax levy increase is 2.24%, which is below the cap. And that's also the estimated tax rate increase. How does that impact one's home? A basic star subsidy of a home assessed at $150,000, let's see, a $43.43 annual increase. So looking at five years of budget tax levy and tax rate changes, certainly slow and steady wins the race, but in this graphic, you can see what's happened to the tax rate due to the Amherst reassessment program that took place last year. So we're seeing a little over a 12% decrease in our tax rate. Now what happens if the budget that's put before voters in May does not pass? Under state law, school boards can submit a budget to voters a maximum of two times. So for example, if it did not pass this coming May, the board has some options. The board could put the same budget back in front of the voters for a revote. It could make changes to the budget and put that in front of the voters for a revote. Or the board could adopt at that time a contingent budget. Our contingent budget would be with a 0% tax levy increase, which would require $2,697,000 in budget reductions in order to meet that contingent budget amount. So here we are in our calendar. On April 10, we've adopted the 2018-19 proposed budget. On May 3, we have our annual budget hearing and school board candidates night, of course, followed by our annual district vote and school board election on May 15 at North High School. So please don't forget to come out and vote. We ask that our community come out and make their voices be heard on the ballot. Will be proposition number one, which is the proposed budget. And number two will be to vote for three Board of Education members to our school board. And voting takes place Tuesday, May 15, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the Williamsville North High School gym. So any questions, comments, concerns from the board? Happy to discuss those. Susan?
Just a quick question, and I apologize if you did talk about that while I was reading the textbook. Under the recommendations of the security, now that we have some extra money, you said the security audit. Who, are you looking at a company to do that? Or the Amherst Police or?
Yes, well, we have.
Formalized?
Yeah, based on our conversation at past board meetings, we have the Amherst Police Department, who's agreed to come in and conduct audits. But at the same time, in addition to that, we want to look at having outside experts, a consultant. It could be a company. It could be an individual. We'd have to explore that further to come in, look at our security and safety procedures across our entire district to make recommendations for potential improvements.
Okay. So that is a goal. We haven't specifically picked a company or?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Van Seis?
First of all, I'm so excited to see this, to see the new money coming in. And when we sat here a month ago and talked about the audit that we thought was very important, a behavior specialist, and then upgrading some of our security. So on top of everything else that this budget has allowed in the work of Mr. Maturski, it's outstanding to see. So I know as a board member, I feel very confident and very, very satisfied with this. So thank you. Just a question with, sometimes there is misconception with a budget vote, and sometimes community members feel like it's going towards teacher salaries only. How will the district relay this information again, so that the public and the community is aware and educated on what the budget vote entails?
Yes, well, we'll present the budget again publicly, May 3. Certainly open to attending any public meetings from any outside organizations. I've done that in the past at roaderies, at different, with different groups. I've presented it to, for example, our superintendent's community council, a number of community leaders from across the district. And then our social media efforts, we'll also focus on that, as well as our traditional media efforts that Mrs. Wolf takes care of, which is our proposed budget booklet, as well as our community flyer that explains the budget. We also do a Q&amp;A form every year for the budget to answer people's common questions that they might have. So we try to educate people, but it's also a fine line because we can't, as a school district, encourage or discourage people to vote yes or no on the budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
Just a question about the behavior specialist. I think you partially answered it. You said it doesn't necessarily have to be an administrator. It could be a teacher. With the posting, will there be any type of requirement in terms of prior years of teaching service? The reason why I ask is, my fear is that it would be, you know, someone with less than five years of teaching experience because to become a true behavior specialist, it's not about the degree that you earned from the university that you attended, but it's really about the work that you did in the trenches.
No, I agree with you. We haven't developed that job description yet. That's something we have to look at and go over as a team. You know, I think if you ask any of, anyone on our leadership team, really it's critical to get the right individual with the right experience into this role. Otherwise, no one's going to believe in this person. No one's going to trust this person. What this person says and does isn't going to help and it won't work. So it's critical that it be the right individual with a very good experience, working with children, working with challenging behaviors, working with all the things that our teachers and administrators are running into in the current climate.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mecha? Sorry, I missed part of the presentation. So if this was covered, I apologize. But there's a calculation for additional state aid of approximately 50,000, or sorry, no, that's state aid. The sales tax, sorry if I said it wrong. Sales tax increase of, I think it's $50,000? Is that the right amount? Is that, is that a pretty conservative estimate or is that?
I think that's a very solid estimate right now. As, we're not, of course, considering the other political ramifications that are being discussed. We're considering what has happened and what we consider will continue to happen. We always look at this, I look at it historically. I look at it trends and then I look at current receipts of this year. So that is, I would say, a very solid number.
Okay. Thanks. And if I can bring up a second issue. The increase in state aid, now I can use Dr. McClary's help, the increase in state aid was 333,479. And interestingly, our enhancing school safety efforts is 333,479. So our entire increase in state aid is being directed toward enhancing school safety efforts, which I think is a responsible choice at this time, and I like the effort. I wonder though, if we as a board shouldn't turn around and move forward in a lobbying effort to New York State to say, all of the increase that you gave us is being eaten up by school safety measures right now. Shouldn't, shouldn't the state kick in something to cover this, you know, for all school districts? Does that make sense or is that kind of pie in the sky?
I get where you're going with that. And speaking personally, I think I'd support that. I don't know what the general attitude is towards that, but I would assume that many people would support something like that.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
I just have a question. Mark, I think you attend the Erie County Association of School Boards has that been an issue that's been brought up, that districts are using the money towards enhancing school security?
I don't think we've had a meeting since the incident in Florida. So I don't think it's been discussed. I know Erie County Association of School Boards was not at all pleased with the state's budget, and they felt that it fell far short of where it needed to be. And I think we might make the case that, especially in light of the fact that many school districts are doing things to enhance their safety efforts at this point, which is chewing up all of the increase in state aid for us in our particular circumstance. In other school districts, I don't know what, what the plan is, but it seems that the state should want to help school districts offset this cost to some degree, since it's such an important issue.
I would agree with you, Mr. Mecha. On a personal side, I know I've sent letters and made a few phone calls to some of the politicians in Albany about that matter. I would encourage all the board members here to do the same. It can't hurt. I know we do have a meeting coming up with Erie County in the coming weeks, and I'm sure this will be a hot topic.
So I wonder, I know we had an effort initiated in terms of sending out a letter to legislators regarding school safety enhancements for students to prevent gun violence, if that's an okay way to phrase it. I wonder if it's, if this makes logical sense to include some element of this in that letter when we, when we give further consideration to the direction that we head with that letter? I don't know.
Mr. Meyer, any?
Sure. Any, any comments are welcome. And then we'll see what we craft and what's agreeable to, you know, the majority or everyone on the board.
Mrs. Vasquez? Mrs. Vasquez?
I completely support what Mr. Mecca is suggesting. The reservations that I have are, I think, the devil's in the details. Because how can we... Well, how can New York State really determine equitable allocation of what's safe for each school in New York State? So our safety concerns may not be the same safety concerns as another school in New York State. So New York State is responsible for equitable distribution of funds, right? So if we spend $333,000 on safety issues and we want that money recouped from New York State, do they think that it's a value of $333,000 for each district in the state? I don't know. But it's worth investigating. It's worth adding to the letter and, you know... Because safety is a concern. But it's only a concern when something happens. I mean, it's, you know... Sadly, this Parkland, this most recent Parkland incident has opened up a lot of people's eyes regarding this issue. But like I said in the last meeting, it will fade until the next incident occurs. So, yes, we need safety precautions and measures in our district. Yes, New York State should pay for it because it's part of making every child feel safe in their schools, and that's important. But how do we, as a state, make sure that it's equitable across all districts? I don't know.
Any other budget questions? Thank you. I apologize for having us vote on it before.
Okay, nice job.
It was... My agenda doesn't have presentation, and then we got here and suddenly realized we were missing something. Anybody want to reneg their vote? There are no personnel matters to discuss this month. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to award bids for the Smart Schools Capital Project as presented? Mrs. Beeger, second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. There are no special needs and student activity matters to discuss this month. Does anybody have anything, a request or matter to discuss under the committee of the whole? Mrs. Beeger?
We had had a discussion before that I wanted to bring to the table about a board meeting last year where we had a student perform at the beginning of the meeting. And it really set a nice tone for our meeting. And I just wanted to open up the floor for discussion about possibly including students or including music in the beginning of our meetings, perhaps featuring students from different schools or incorporating maybe the Star Spangled Banner. Or I don't know even if we wanted to leave to schools how to select that. But I thought that was really nice. And I know, Mr. Mecca, my idea is actually coming from you. I'll start it, and then if you want to add. But I think that it's a great idea to continue that.
I appreciate you serving as my memory bank.
You're most welcome.
Yeah, I sat there and said, "Yeah, I think I have something to discuss at this point," but I can't remember what it was. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it was a great way to start that meeting, and I've thought it would be great to have something like that again. I wonder if the board could put out a letter to each principal and just say, you know, "We would like to consider having a musical presentation if you have any recommendation for us among your students or groups or clubs or anything like that. Please let us know, and then we can see what comes in and then say, you know, 'Hey, can you come to this meeting?' And kind of plan it out. Does that make sense, or any other suggestion?
I think it's a great idea. I would suggest maybe going through Mr. Russo as the director of the Fine Arts Music Program first. And then he can sort of... Not to add to his workload, but please to let him know how much we appreciate the music in our district. And it sets a nice tone for what can sometimes be lengthy meetings. So it's always appreciated.
Any other comments on that? Let's see, head bobs. Mr. Mecca?
So what action step is needed to get the ball rolling, then, with Mr. Russo? Who needs to do what?
Well, I'm going to suggest that we leave it to the district to figure this out. If the board wants that, we can leave it to Dr. Markslav, and he can reach out on that. Is there any... I mean, Dr. Markslav, do you believe you could just act on this? Or would you like us to make a motion for the next meeting to formally?
No, we can act on this. And I'll ask Mrs. Wolf, our Director of Communications, to work with Mr. Russo and the principals to come up with a schedule where people can come and share their musical talents with the board for a few minutes at the beginning of a board meeting. It would set a nice tone going forward. So we'll look to do that soon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussions or matters under the committee of the whole? Nope. Are there any correspondences to discuss tonight? I have one that I will bring up. I panned it around the board table earlier tonight. I'm not going to read it here. But we have a young and up-and-coming politician who spoke at our podium here last month that sent us a letter thanking us for all the work that we've done regarding school security and school safety. Ms. Megan Hall, who's a senior at Williamsville South High School. I think she's going to be somebody... We're going to see go places very, very far, very quickly. So thank her for her letter. We will now conduct our second public expression with the same rules outlined from our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the board should go to the podium now. Please sign in and state your name.
Hi, Helene Sanders, 171 on McCree Court. I decided to address you to plead for your vote on the 17th so I can be on the Bocis Board. So what I've done is, since I'm addressing Bocis tomorrow, I've kind of edited my speech and so to be relevant, both to Bocis and to this board. So I decided to approach you on a topic I am very passionate about, and that's the teaching of civics. I am passionate about a variety of issues. So if this issue ends up irrelevant to the Bocis Board or this board, know that I could be just as passionate about issues that are more relevant to the Bocis Board or this board. I'm just going to go back to what you've already seen submitted from me. So you're familiar with my background and experience. I graduated from Cornell and worked in public sector labor relations. I am also on the Town of Amherst Disability Committee, and I am Williamsville Norris Representative to SEPTA. What makes me unique is my understanding about how to access government. I derive that ability as a Erie County Democratic Committee member. I believe civics should be taught both to Bocis students and to students in its component school districts. I understand how difficult it can be for young people to interface with government. Currently, without landlines and with many changes of address, voters under 30 can be reached only through social media... Media, sorry. It's a Long Island accent. Therefore, we have to start communicating with young people as they approach voting age by teaching civics. And this is where my passion comes. It takes a village to raise a child. Knowing that, students need to know how to be engaged citizens. School districts exist within town and counties. Accordingly, I propose a community approach with the teaching of civics being of utmost importance. When the Town of Amherst applied for a grant, which it later received for sidewalks along Casey Road, the Williamsville Central School District should have been a part of that. If a student is injured by a vehicle, God forbid, while walking home from school, the school district needs to respond, as do the town and county, who has responsibility for the roads. When there is a cellular dead zone near your school north, and this came up with Parkland, and you know your kids can't text you in an emergency or vice versa, you need to know to go to your town board to ask for improved cellular service. Along with my knowledge of labor relations and experience with the disabled, I have unique knowledge of how local government operates. This is knowledge I can bring to the Bocis Board and this board so we can be a community able to ask for resources. And I'm just going to conclude, I'm not clocked yet, that I've decided to submit a plan to teach an adult ed class on civics and have spoken to the relevant Williamsville person and the relevant Bocis... Oh, hope to speak to the relevant Bocis person. And I've also reached out to public officials on the town and county level to see if they would speak about their roles and answer questions. I did the same with state assembly and state senate people. And I don't consider this a partisan issue. And as an Erie County Democratic Committee member, I've also reached out to some Republicans if they would like to speak on this topic. The response has been overwhelmingly positive. So I hope in the future that that civics can be encouraged.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, we keep it interesting. I keep you guys on your toes tonight. Before we end the meeting, I do want to wish Mrs. Toni Vasquez a happy birthday on Friday.
Friday the 13th, very much.
We would have had a bigger audience to sing at the beginning of the meeting than now.
Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Mrs. Vasquez, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Mecca? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries unanimously.